I guess if we're closing in on five o'clock? No, I don't need to gab, I'm just going to knock, that's all right.
You're not official.
It's four fifty-nine.
Just one thing I don't like about this job. I'll call the meeting to order for the Smith County Board of Supervisors for January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance laid by Kendra Hayden and stay standing for the invocation by Emily Edmondson from the Episcopal Episcopal Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bring you greetings from Christ Episcopal Church. It's a congregation that's a hundred and fifty-three years old, just down the street. You're in Marion. So let us pray. Lord Christ, when you came among us, you proclaimed the kingdom of God in villages, towns, and lonely places. Granted your presence and power may be known throughout land, throughout this land. Have mercy upon all of us who live and work in rural areas, especially Smith County, and grant that all the people of our nation may give thanks to you for food and drink and all other bodily necessities of life. Respect those who labor to produce them and honor the land and the water from which these good things come. All this we ask, in your holy name, amen. Almighty God, one more. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this state, especially Smith County, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
With this being the organizational meeting of the Board Supervisors, I will open the floor to nominations for the position of chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Charlie Atkins for chair.
I'll second the motion.
Any further nominations? Motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then voting on the nomination of Mr. Atkins as chairman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll turn the page over to Mr. Ed.
I guess now we vote for vice chair. Have any nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Lori Deal. Make a motion to nominate Lori Deal for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion to second. Do we have any other nominations? Do I hear no motion to close nominations?
So moved.
I'll second.
Alrighty. All those in favor of Lori being vice chair say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Lori's vice chair. I guess we now do the clerk and deputy clerk. Have we changed the rules that you're no longer the deputy clerk? I always get, every January I argue this.
We can.
We're voting for you, but we've already got rules that say you will be. But I guess I need a motion for Sean to be our vice. Can we do all three at one time? I'd like to have a motion to appoint Sean as our clerk and Lisa Richardson, Paula Harvey as deputy clerks. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. Moving now down to the organizational actions. Adoption of minutes, meeting schedule. Right now our, what's it called, our rules and procedures call for us to have our meeting, our first meeting on the second Tuesday and our second meeting if needed on the third, on the fourth Thursday. I've heard some discussion in, out in the public that we need to change that first one. Do we have any discussion, do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment that the town in Saltville meets on the first or the second Tuesday and it conflicts, and I just think it would be great if we could have it on another day that would not conflict with him. So folks like Roscoe or anybody else on this board that wants to attend their meeting, it'd be great. So I'll make that motion to have our first meeting on the second Thursday and the second meeting on the fourth Thursday.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? I would like to add that I found out just moments ago that the town of Chillhally is changing their meeting to the second Thursday.
We'll have a conflict somewhere.
So we're trying to avoid one conflict, we get another. I'm happier with the Thursday. So I.
I think it helps with the confusion of, is this a Tuesday week or a Thursday week for the, for the board meetings?
So any, anybody else have any feelings one way or the other? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote then on the, this doesn't, this doesn't address the time issue, but right now we're voting to change our board meetings to the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And because we're changing to Thursday, the only one I know we might have a conflict will be Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir. So in your packet, I do have a draft meeting schedule that addresses Thanksgiving and it won't, it won't affect December this year like it did this past year, but the planning commission normally goes, meets the week before, the Thursday before, so that would be the, the third Thursday instead of the fourth Thursday in November.
What page are you on?
I'm on page six of the packet, I'm sorry. And moving to the Thursday, normally we would have affected the November tw- first meeting because of VACO meetings, but they're over by Tuesday, so we're, we can stick with the same, same Thursday.
Okay. So we're good to go with that then, aren't we?
As long as you're accepting of November thirteenth seventeenth as the replacement then. Okay, you can adopt this schedule actually as presented if you'd like.
Does that sound good to everyone? We vote to adopt this schedule on page six? Do I hear a motion to do that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds here, so I think it's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the, of the schedule on page six, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alright, we leave the times like they are, or do we need to change the times now?
In your, in your rules and procedures, we do have, I'm looking, I wrote it down which page it was, the meetings, that we did say in the rules and procedure, we have an error that says five o'clock for the first meeting and seven o'clock for the second meeting. What I'd like to recommend is a five o'clock for a legislative meeting, and if there's a special public hearing with the planning commission, it's normal, that would be at seven o'clock, and that would continue to be at seven o'clock. Page eleven, okay, thank you. Four point one. So I'll make, I can make an amendment to that, if you'd like to wait to adopt those at our, our next meeting, or if you, if you want to adopt it as amended, however you wish.
We also have it on page nine. Set the timer there for after time. So we need to change both places. Do I hear a motion to that effect then? If everybody's in agreement? Have a motion from Mike? Have a second? Motion to the second, any further discussion? Is everyone clear what we're voting on?
Five o'clock meetings and special public hearings at seven o'clock for the second meeting.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty, moving on then. We adopted, we got to adopt the holiday schedule.
Normally, we do have a motion to adopt the, the holiday, the state holiday schedule that's given, granted by the governor as amended from, from time to time, I think is the way the language was last year. So if the governor gives an extra day at Christmas or whatever, that's already worked into the.
Yeah, I know I had more calls this year on the fact that the trash dumpsters were closed because of the governor's days I had to explain that, you know, we're not allowed to haul trash, and if the governor closed the landfill in Bristol, we were closed. But people don't understand that when he got a bag into the car full of trash.
I experienced that this year.
So I'd say forgive good, but not too generous with the, with the vacation time, holiday schedules. Anybody got any suggestions? Do I have a motion of any type?
I would assume we'd make a motion to adopt the state holiday schedule, correct?
As amended by the government.
Alrighty, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. Amendment to the agenda. I believe we have one.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion to add the Wood Green Millwork dash AFID Grant Check Presentation to number five, special presentations to the agenda for the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting.
Alright, we have a second?
Second.
We have no motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alright, it's added to the agenda. Judy's not here, Missy. I can't see who's sitting behind the columns, so, okay. Minutes of the previous meeting, the minutes of the December fourteenth meeting and December thirtieth meeting are enclosed for the board's review and approval. Do we have any questions on those, or do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from both meetings.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. We have no public hearing scheduled. Financial status report.
I'll do that for you tonight.
You gonna be me some of the lines?
Mrs. Richardson's absence.
I'll do the special recognition through the chair.
Oh, we were looking around, we don't see the representative from Wood Green.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, you're high. Well, we can do it. Alrighty, let's do that thing.
I may ask the chairman to come and join us for a photo op, if you want to come around.
I'm not photogenic.
Neither are we, sir.
Stephanie doesn't care if you're photogenic or not, right?
She has a good computer.
She can make us photogenic.
She has a special camera.
It's got a warranty on it, it breaks. So we, as part of Wood Green's expansion, recent expansion, we were finally able to, we're being granted the ability to release the AFID grant, the incentive grant that came from the state, so I don't even remember exactly how much it was, it's.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you all, I appreciate that, thank you so much. Appreciate that, thank you.
I'd like to make a, well, the editorial to add to that, Wood Green's been both good for us and Grayson County because I understand the, I want to call it the lumberyard, I don't know what they call it, but the lumberyard in Grayson's doing, is, is going full scale, trying to get it up and running, and they're a fantastic employer, so I'm so pleased that we're able to help and.
Thank you all very much, you know, yeah, we're looking forward to it and just to update you all real quick. We have started the roof project here at the Plant Two, as we're calling it, and then we have also contracted somebody to put in the dust system, and we have bought several pieces of equipment, so we're hoping to have some things going on in that plant about May and June here.
We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Gotta get my eyes back, I'm just seeing what we're. Financial status.
Okay, I'm gonna talk from here, hopefully folks can hear me better. So you have your, your finance packet at your desk. I just have a few quick highlights for you. You'll see there on the front, the first page, the current cash balance, if you include the CDs, just over twenty-one million dollars compared to this time last year, we're about six hundred thousand dollars to the go, so that's a good thing, we're still trending in a positive nature. Including all of the funds that we have, the special funds, it's just over twenty-four million in cash on hand. Looking at page two, uncollected taxes and, and fees, the, you'll notice the balance for the water and sewer is just over two point six million dollars to the negative. That balance has been growing slowly for the past several years. This time last year, we're at two point five million, just over a hundred and, a hundred and sixty thousand from there. I will note that, you'll remember that we've, we've done an RFP for a water study, countywide water study. Part of that water study is to go, is to dig deeper into the, into the, the financial losses that appear to be there and to, to better define that, and so we'll have a, we'll have a better game plan for moving that into the positive realm. Uncollected taxes, you'll see for the, the top part, two point nine million in uncollected taxes thus far compared to last year with a three point four million, we're just under half a million dollars to the, to the, hundred, under a half million dollars better than we were last year. Similar results on the, the two thousand twenty-one figures as far as collections. Then you turn a few pages, you have the treasurer's accountability report, I'll just, that's basically more numbers that substantiate the, the summary of the first two pages. Going back about halfway, you'll see the, the revenue summary pages. I'm not going to read every, every figure there, but I will highlight that we were just up, we received in revenue just over fifty-four million dollars. Year-to-date, that was the end of December, and we have expended forty-one million dollars, so we're, we're in a positive realm there. What we do see though is, is usually that, that thirteen million dollar gap quickly closes as the schools continue to work toward, a lot of their finances are in the, toward the end of the fiscal year rather than the beginning, so that'll catch itself back up. We are trending positive compared to recent years, so be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions for him? Now we have the payments of the invoices and accounts payable, attachment six.
Start to page sixty.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. This is the accounts payable. I guess we need to do these individual funds, so to speak, so for fund one, we have total general accounting of one million, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? And there's a list attached that, that comes up to that total if you're wondering what that involves. And I suggest you go through it and sort of familiarize yourself, and that way if you have a question, it's there. You can ask Sean or somebody, figure out what they're spending money for. All those in favor of the total general county, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Okay, the CDBG Food Pantry Grant Fund three oh three, seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Share Fund seven forty-eight, a thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents?
So moved.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Commonwealth Attorney Drug Asset Account.
Mr. Chairman? I think it's staying.
Okay. Recovery Court Fund seven forty-nine, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Yeah.
Commonwealth Attorney Drug Asset Account Fund seven sixty, sixteen dollars.
I don't know about that one. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Well, that's not our money, so we can spend that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
CARES Act Money Fund seven seventy-five, CARES Act Utility Relief Fund, hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. This is money we're actually transferring to other, to other than the towns, so.
Yeah, most of it was to the towns and fifty-eight hundred went to the water and sewer department.
If we don't transfer it, do we get to keep it?
No, then we have to send it back.
Take it back.
Have a motion to, in a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alrighty. Citizens' time. Okay, we've had two signups. Mrs. Ogil, come forward and state your name and address. We'll give you five minutes, but I.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, I'm here on Ms. Ogil's behalf too, my name's David Sager, Attorney at the Avenue. We signed up for this, but don't know, we're here about the condition, or the special use permit. Will there be time to comment there, or should we do it now?
Do it now.
Excuse me, my name is Bida Odo, I'm at the five oh six South Fork Road. I was at the planning meeting and there was a, a motion made to allow an airstrip to be built on property adjoining mine. I strongly opposed it, I said so then, and I say, I'm saying it again. Some of my reasons are, is that the state of Virginia is committed to the preservation of family farms and the farming community against urbanization. If this airstrip can be done in this situation, then it can be done in any other areas zoned for agricultural use. Mr. Decamaria stated that he wanted to expose others to the jewels of Smith County. To those of us in the farming community, we are aware of all this area has to offer. We also know if we allow the beauty of our forestry and farmland to be utilized in a non-agricultural activity, we will lose what has made this area so unique. I had many questions during the last meeting and, and we had conflicting answers, and I still am confused and still have questions, but given that I've only had thirteen days to research this, I was notified two days before the planning commission. Yes, it was in the paper, so I did have that notification, but I didn't utilize it. I utilized what was available to me. I was sent a notification by mail that was misaddressed, it's postmarked on the sixteenth. Apparently it was returned to the planning commission office on the twenty-seventh. I got a call from Sarah saying that she apologized she misaddressed my letter. Therefore, I had from Monday evening until Thursday evening to get ready for this meeting. So I wasn't very prepared, and I'm still not, considering I've had ten days since then. No one answered why, if any, regulations would regulate the use of my property. It was brought up that FAA regulations would regulate my farm use property, but again, it was brought up that FAA wasn't involved, so I don't know who to believe, my research or Mr. Decamaria's answers to your questions. I was told there was a, an inspection, onsite inspection, and I was sent four pictures. One picture of the south is the road going into it, the picture of the north shows a fence in my property, the picture from the east shows the middle of the field that's alleged to be where the airport is going to be located toward my home, and on the west, it shows nothing but his field. There's no layout whatsoever to determine where this airstrip is going to be in relation to my property. There was a, a Smith County truck, I think, I'm assuming, out there today taking pictures. The only flag I've seen is one that is sixteen foot from my fence and approximately three hundred and thirty feet from my home, no, two hundred and fifty-five feet from my home. The other is the flag, that, the windsock flag, it's the two fifty-five, and then the little red marker that I'm assuming is part of the airport, which, all this is assumptions, I had no time to question or validate any of this, is two hundred and forty-three feet from my front porch. Now, when, when I was told about this special use ordinance revision, I asked, why would you consider a revision to a special use permit that hasn't been revised to include an airport since World War II? Why would you even allow that? The reasons I was quoted is it would allow access, more access, for EMS helicopters to land, and others in Smith County were interested in establishing their own airports. Now that I know EMS doesn't have, have to have anybody's permission to go on your land or your property, this airstrip has no bearing on emergency medical services whatsoever. The other reason that I cited was that other people in Smith County were interested. I've asked who the others are, where they are, no one's provided any additional detail, only that there's others. Well, if there's others.
Your time's up.
Thank you for all your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, board, members of the board, I represent Ms. Odo, I represent her in several things, and she called me, and we are concerned about the constriction of time that has happened, if, since she actually received notice of this till now, so we're asking that you table any decision on this until we have a chance to fully and completely vet this matter. Stand to be corrected again, she called me just a few days ago, and we tried to put something together, but I understand your zoning law was only amended a couple of months ago to allow for a, a private airport, or for, for an airport, so that's a recent change. She, as I already told you, she only knew two days or a little over two days before the planning commission meeting that this was going to be happening, and so I think there's a, a real question of notice. And so I think there's a, a real question of notice and fairness to her. Um, I don't understand what the rush is here, and I submit there shouldn't be one. Uh, you're taking a step that you've never taken before because you haven't allowed these, because you haven't had the conditional use permit until a couple of months ago. I think you need to look at this in depth before you open Pandora's box, uh, to potentially allowing this throughout the county. Uh, so I'm asking that you, uh, table it. Um, I think there's a question of a possible inverse condemnation claim. We don't know, I've done a little research, I was on the plant, on the Airport Commission for Virginia Highlands Airport for about eight years. And we had real concerns, one of our biggest issues we dealt with were easements, uh, flight path easements. And some of my reading indicates that there may be a question about a clearance easement and a navigation easement. But we haven't had a chance and the time to fully vet that. Now, there is a procedure that if you pass it, she can appeal it and take it up to the court. But we don't want to do any of that stuff. All we want to do is have an opportunity to fully vet this thing, to know, uh, to bring to you information to let you make an informed decision. Uh, we think this has been, uh, at least her opportunity to do this has been greatly restricted. Uh, and again, um, there's some, I, I understood from your minutes, I've read that uh, visual flight rules, grass strip only, has been recommended. I'm not sure that's defined anywhere in your, in your, uh, rules and regulations, so what does that mean? Uh, that's what was approved by Planning Commission, and they've asked you to approve that, so exactly what does that mean? Uh, I, I understand it visual, but you have no definition in your code for that. If you're going to start allowing these things, I think they need to be more fully understood exactly what you're allowing. I think your code needs to be supplemented to, to more specifically address these issues. Because there seems to be a rush to judgment here, and so for those reasons, we're asking that uh, you table this and not vote on it until appropriate time is allowed.
Can we get your name for the record?
David Scyper, S-C-Y-P-A-G-R-S.
Thank you.
Okay, that's public. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Robert DeCamera, uh, and I reside at sixteen forty Redstone Road, Chilhauie. Um, I, I just wanted to respond briefly. Uh, thank you for allowing me to appear before you tonight. Um, there was some mention that, uh, Ms. Odl didn't have, uh, appropriate notice. Uh, and her attorney just mentioned, uh, some, something about rush, rush to judgment. Uh, when we initiated this, uh, this, uh, request about three months ago, um, there was a problem at the time where, um, we were, we were finding cattle from, um, Ms. Odl on her property. And in talking to Kleg about this issue, um, and this is three months ago, Kleg said, and by the way, um, Ms. Odl has complained about your airstrip. That was three months ago, as Kleg is, is our witness, uh, so she has had plenty of notice. Um, so I think that's a misrepresentation. The, the second point that I would make is that, um, if there was a time for Ms. Odl to demonstrate about her inability to control the property, uh, that's in discussion tonight, it was any time in the past two years while this property was up for sale and publicly, um, advertised for sale. He had every right in the world to control what would go on with this property by simply purchasing it, uh, which we did to the tune of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Having done so, I think it's, uh, a fair request for us to be able to exercise our private property rights on it. And had she wished to do so and, um, uh, have it be whatever use she preferred, she had every ability to do so for the past two years. That's, that's the extent of my comments. I don't know if you have any questions for me while I'm here, but.
We thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to be allowed to speak on what you said.
Anyone else wishing to speak? It's a public hearing, uh, citizens time. Hearing none, I'll close citizens time.
Yeah.
I want to speak about something else.
Yeah, that's what this is for.
No, yeah.
Yeah, this is your option.
Come forward, state your name and address.
I just wanted to come, uh, my name's Kenneth Browning, I reside at five five three eight Magalene in Sugar Grove. And I went to the town council and tried to get them to help, and they said they don't have no money to help. But I have come to y'all, wanting to see if y'all can help. This past Sunday, I ran into, and this, this is just twelve of them. I done a research, we have like eighty, eighty, or a hundred and fifty some homeless people here in Smith County alone. This past Sunday, I ran into two. Um, one was twenty, one was nineteen. The male was twenty, the female was nineteen. Um, I called the dispatch and asked the dispatch if anything we could do. They sent a town officer. Well, come find out, the town, the town officer got their motel room from one night, but I'm wanting to see if the board of supervisors can help or go about a situation to do a homeless shelter. Cause it does say in the Bible, we should help the less fortunate. I mean, we never know, one of us could be in their shoes and could be homeless out there in the freezing cold without a place to go. It says, if you allow me to read a few things, in Isaiah fifty-eight seven says, "It is not to share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house. When you see the naked, to cover him, and not to hide yourself from your own flesh." I just hope that y'all would, if y'all gonna make a decision today, don't rush to a, a no decision. If you need to, more time to vote on it and to discuss it, to try to help, and let's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of property here in Smith County, Town of Marion and Smith County, we could do this homeless shelter act. And I will be, if y'all need help, I will help design the homeless shelter for you. And I appreciate y'all giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, I'll close citizens time. Now we're going to the old business, Planning Commission recommendation on special use permit request from Mr. DeCamera to establish an airport. And on page one twenty-four of the agenda is a copy of the, uh, Planning Commission's recommendations. Mr. Williams?
All right, thank you, good evening. Uh, after the public hearing held December thirtieth, uh, of last year, the Planning Commission reconvened their meeting, um, and after discussion rendered the following motion. David Spence, Planning Commissioner, Sawtooth District Representative, made the motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they approve Robert Camera's application for special use permit to establish an airport, with the condition that it be a visual flight rules VFR grass strip only, uh, airport. Graham Davidson Jr., Planning Commissioner, Chilhauie District Representative, seconded the motion, and the following vote was recorded. Five Y's, Pew, Davidson, Wagner, Shepherd, and Spence. Zero N's, one abstention, Campbell, and one absent. Mr. Dean? Thank you.
Okay. Much pleasure, board.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify just a couple of things?
Go ahead and ask.
I would keep hearing the term airport and airstrip. I think that's where a lot of the confusion is coming in. When you have airport, you think gross laws, lights, everything around it's restricted, you can't build tall buildings, load it off. What's the difference in airport and airstrip in this case?
So when when Mr. DeCamera first came to my office, and, and he discussed the possibility of establishing a, a private airport, private airstrip, whatever term you want to put on it. Um, when you go to our zoning ordinance, there was no provision for airports, uh, or airstrips, or grass strips, or anything like that. So that's when we had the conversation that it was a use not provided for. Um, and that's basically when he petitioned the board to consider changing the ordinance to provide some provision for airstrips, airports, again, whatever term you want to put on it. Now, we could have at that point separated them and come up with other terms, private airstrip, public airport. Um, and done, you know, however we wanted to tailor it for our zoning ordinance, but the decision was to lump them under one term, airport. Um, so now, whether you're private or public, you have the ability in various districts to apply for a special use permit. And that's what was adopted, and that was the, obviously, the avenue that he pursued after it was adopted.
So the, the overarching term is airport, but it's specified grass strip only, which is why it's worded this way?
Correct, yes. The Planning Commission ultimately felt that, that it being a visual flight rules only grass strip, um, then that eliminates the possibility of night flights, uh, flights coming in during, you know, inclement weather. Um, and I can only assume that that would minimize any impact to the area.
So if Ms. Odl wants to build a four-story barn twenty feet from her fence, is she able to do that?
Based on Mr. Pennington's response, I would say yes. Um, and, and I would, I believe it at that.
Yeah, cause I specifically asked that question last time, and that's what we got.
And Curtis, I believe, responded to that.
Yes.
The second question I have, that's okay, Mr. Chairman, I noticed, um, Mr. Campbell abstained, is there a reason, did he express a reason?
I, he, he did not express a reason, no matter.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead and ask.
Uh, the direction of the airport that was corrected by Mr. Camery, is that the direction of the strip, which would not go in the direction of her, of her house?
Yeah, so to clarify that, Paul, if you don't mind. So the initial request showed the airstrip going three six oh, and correct me if I get this wrong, which is basically a compass bearing, so due north. Is that a fair statement?
Three five zero, ten degrees west of north.
Right, but, okay. So then, there was an amendment site plan that showed it three five oh, which was ten degrees west of north.
Right.
Um, and so to eliminate confusion, we actually met him today with GPS unit, and we took these two green points. And we've now drawn that airstrip between those two points.
This, I, I've measured this, this is approximately five hundred feet from Ms. Odl's house. You got the red flags she's seen are landscaping, uh, guidelines to give privacy for noise and aesthetics. Uh, but this is the end of the runway, and I've been out there with a five hundred, with a hundred-foot tape measure, it's five hundred feet from her house, not two fifty. What she's seeing is red stakes every hundred feet that we put for privacy foliage, you know, to, as, as a good neighbor.
And just to sort of, one finger's four hundred feet. So I would say that five hundred feet is a pretty close approximation.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead and ask.
Well, I never found it, because I'm written down.
Just a moment for technical.
That's fine.
Sorry. Oh, so to clarify the, the FAA involvement, again, going back to the, if Ms. Odl wants to build a four-story, um, building on her property, they, they do not have a say in what she does. They only have a say in Mr. DeCamara's property, based on the definition of an airstrip.
Yes, and based on Curtis's response to that question, and then I would also offer this, and this is just an observation, but there is an existing airstrip down at Old Airport Bridge, south of Chilhauie. There's obviously the airport and gross laws. In order for that airport to be there, because it's federally backed, we had to adopt an airport safety zoning ordinance. And we do regulate the height restrictions for properties in the surrounding area. That ordinance does not apply to the airport south of Chilhauie. And, and there's been no mention of that in any of my conversations with FAA. So between those two sources, I would, yes, I would assume it does not apply in this situation either.
My second question is, since the airport on the White Top Road at the crossroads was basically grandfathered in because it was airport zoning, are we going to make a change and have it designated? Do we have to do that, or is it just not a matter of?
No, see, so that's kind of the funny part. Um, they're in the same boat that Mountain Empire is in. They too had no mechanism. If they wanted to expand under our current, our previous zoning ordinance, I would have no mechanism to allow Mountain Airport, uh, Mountain Empire to expand, because airports were not considered in our original zoning ordinance. So that change literally affected everybody in Smith County. Every property owner now has, well, that's appropriately zoned, has the ability to apply for a special use permit, but so does Mountain Empire.
Okay. On completion of this project, who would be the final inspector? Is that you, is that FAA, is that, who is that?
Um, as far as FAA, they only want to know, they, they want it to be registered on our maps, so that they can publish that information, so if you're a pilot, you know where other planes may be popping up. Um, so to my knowledge, they won't be doing any inspections as to the actual construction. Um, there were no specifications as to width and length, so there's really nothing for me to inspect there. The only thing I would probably be involved with is the actual land disturbing. If that's over ten thousand square feet, don't need a permit, and we'll deal with that.
And you mentioned with the, um, FAA knowing that that's a designated site, just going back to clarify again, the comment made about, um, use by men flying any commercial services. Just want to make the statement that this would save time, and I'm sure Mr. Wagner, Mr. Frapp, and the Sheriff Department can clarify that that saves dispatch time, so they're not having to search a field that you can land in that's closest to the accident scene, they can say on this block of South Fork Road is a designated place.
And yes, I would assume that to be true.
So it will be labeled in our GIA system that dispatch has access to. So, fair to say?
I would assume.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Um, earlier on, there was a comment made regarding an airplane can land on any property as long as they have permission from the property owner, correct?
Yeah, it's Mr. Cur- Mr. Pennington stated.
Yeah, that was Curtis again, and that was, that's basically the federal opinion on the matter, yes.
So is there any mechanism that would prohibit him, this, um, Mr. DeCamara, from just getting his plane taken off without any designation as an airstrip? Or reversely, landing here?
I mean, if it's infrequent, bottom line, if I get a complaint and, and it's proven that he is doing it frequently, and I have to declare it an airport, then yes, I would treat it as a zoning violation.
Only because it's now included in our zoning?
Well, regardless.
Okay.
Whether, whether it's in our ordinance or not, if, if you establish a use and you haven't gotten the necessary permits, then if I get a complaint and, and that's proven to be the fact, then I would have to treat it as a zoning violation. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. All right, so what are we going to do?
Mr. Chairman, this is in my district, and I know we've had situations in other districts before that, um, there's been disagreements between adjoining properties. What I personally like to see as a supervisor is the two parties get together, add the questions answered, figure it out, work it out. I don't know that this would happen in this case, I would hope that it would. Um, I don't like to delay projects for one thing. Um, but I also would like for any unanswered questions to be answered. I know our, our time is valuable, and I don't know necessarily how to answer the questions that Ms. Odl has. I know I've spent the last couple of days sending emails back and forth, um... So I'm a little torn. I'd love to see what else everybody says. I mean, I'd like for questions to be answered and I'd like for everybody to work together, but at the same time, I don't want to drag it out.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Chris.
Would it be prudent to maybe consider a thirty-day delay to allow legal counsel to look at it and make sure there's not any hidden pitfalls that we may be at the moment? If that's, if that's the pleasure of the board to give that consideration. And then if there is nothing prohibiting it, then we could reentertain the decision here in four weeks, thereabouts, something like that. Giving Ms. Odl her due process and let the information come forth without any appearance of trying to rush to judgment. And then whatever the judgment turns out to be at that point is what it is. Is that a reasonable expectation or maybe it's a question for our attorney, Mr. Farling? What's your take on that?
There's nothing wrong with being cautious, you know, if that's what you want to do and see, you know, to have confirmation. I don't think notice is an issue in this case as far as noticing public hearing. I think those requirements are met. You know, if you want to allow time for Ms. Odl and her counsel to review that and point out something that we're doing wrong, if they want to do that, then, you know, they give us time to review that and see if they can point out a mistake that may have been made that we're not aware of at this point that we can reconsider if we need to before you take action. You know, it may prevent future litigation, possibly. You know, it's a thirty-day wait. It's your pleasure however you want to proceed, but, you know, there's nothing wrong with doing that. Gives us a few weeks to, you know, try to figure out what risk are there, you know, so.
So just to clarify, it would be your position that it would be a reasonable assessment to delay thirty days to allow any vetting out or fact-finding that may or may not turn out to be relevant?
Yes, I think that's reasonable. I don't think it's required, but I think it's reasonable, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have a second meeting this month?
We will. Yes.
Okay.
It'd be on the twenty-seventh, thirty days, and we meet again on the tenth of February. I would like to add that if we, first off, I hope if we do give thirty days, it's weathered where you don't want to fly. If it's cold and nasty and rainy, it's not going, but if it's beautiful weather, I think we're, you know, we got two taxpayers here. One's wanting to fly and one's not wanting it. And I'm sort of leaning toward the thirty days, but I'm hoping it's not good flying weather during those thirty days. So having said that, we will.
Well, I personally feel like it doesn't necessarily need to be dragged out that long, so we're going to have a second meeting. I say we give our counsel and Ms. Odl's counsel until Friday, January twenty-first to have any questions answered and then we'll reconsider at the January twenty-seventh meeting. And that's my motion.
Okay.
I think I can support that. I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second to have the attorneys talk about it, none themselves, the twenty-first, and we will address the issue on the twenty-seventh.
You said the twenty-first?
The twenty.
Was that the Friday?
Yes, Friday, January twenty-first.
Thank you.
All final answers given to outstanding questions.
Fact-finding to end at that point and then we'll, we'll bring it back up and talk about it on the twenty-seventh.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Any comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like that's what we're going to do. I apologize, but we try to be fair with everybody. Ordinance committee follow-up. Mr. Farling, I believe we got a lot of, we made you work this week.
Yes, sir. I don't know if you want to be the address of Sean.
Bill, let's let Sean start and then you take over.
That sounds good to me.
So you have, you have three draft ordinances at your, at your dais and these are follow-ups. One was the junior firefighter program, one was the tax exemption for elderly and disabled as recommended by the official revenue, and then the third was the article regarding transient occupancy tax. Unless you have any questions or concerns, basically what Mr. Farling has done is he's taken the, the comments from the last board meeting and the recommendations from Mr. Richardson, put it into draft ordinances. The next step would be to schedule public hearings for each of the ordinances for, for public comment and then a consideration after that of amending. I will say that I just realized yesterday, maybe, maybe Friday, that the only time, the only issue that's of concern is the elderly and disabled tax relief ordinance. That program normally commences February first of each year. We do have time that we could schedule for the public hearings and hold the public hearings at the January twenty-seventh board meeting and still be able to at least consider the elderly and tax, the elderly and disabled tax relief ordinance if you didn't want to consider all three. But I would, at least at this point, recommend that the next step would be to schedule public hearings for the, for each of the three ordinances. And it would have to be three separately advertised public hearings. I don't know if Mr. Farling has anything else to add.
No, Sean had pointed out the other day on the firefighting program, I might have, I think I've got a typo of age fourteen through seventeen. It may only be sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, that was the question.
And I think that's, I'll confirm that for Curtis, but the code seems to say sixteen, seventeen. So I may have pulled that out of an older ordinance from a different county. I don't know if that changed in the past however many years, you know, it might have been fourteen at one time and changed to sixteen. But we'll, I'll check that out and talk to Curtis about that. So as far as advertising, we still advertise it. We have the draft ordinance. Once we get an answer to that, we can fix it and then have it available for anybody to look at, you know, if they get to see the public hearing and want to see the ordinance. So that's the only comment I have.
Well, the top line of that says sixteen. Just down in the narrative, it says fourteen, it's seventeen.
Correct, yeah.
So it's just a matter of.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's sixteen, but I need to clarify that we can't do it younger than that.
Well, what we need to do here today is set the public hearings.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Now, the question is, do we want to have one on the twenty-seventh for the senior exemption or do we want to have them all three at the same time?
Just all three at the same time and get it over with?
That's what I recommend. Yes, sir.
On the twenty-seventh?
Yes, sir. And we can get the advertisements out tomorrow.
You buying supper?
Probably is. Sure said you would.
Mr. Chairman.
You said you didn't want to.
I actually have a question. And forgive my ignorance on the transient occupancy, occupancy tax. Over on the section that deals with the exemptions to the tax, and I guess I'm just going down the rabbit hole here, but under section B, it indicates that no transient occupancy tax would be levied if they rented a domicile for thirty or more consecutive days, i.e. hotel, motel, boarding houses, travel, campground and so forth. My question is, would they still, if they were to rent a campground for twenty-eight days and then decide to leave two days shy and they've been paying long and not collecting that tax, how do they do that? Would they have to pay the tax and then get a refund or how does that mechanism work?
Normally, that's, if, it's decided upfront when you reserve the, for a campground, for instance. If I just reserve for twenty-eight days, then I'll have to pay the tax. If I reserve for the thirty, thirty-five days, then I wouldn't. I pay for the thirty-five days, but if I pull out early, I think most campgrounds say, thank you for the seven free days. And that way, yes, at that point, I would assume, since it was paid for more than thirty days, there wouldn't be a tax due.
If there's any refund, do they just take that tax out of the?
Yes, sir.
Refund.
Yeah, that was my question. I just, I'm sorry if I went down the rabbit hole.
Oh, that's fine. That's good. I will say that the, the busy, this campground in the county of Hunger Mother would not be subject to the transient occupancy tax if it's state property, sadly.
Thank you, Bobby, the state.
Right. Be careful.
State opens your campgrounds, even though we have wrecking brands. Mayor Tree.
Yeah.
I said we need to open back up because that really hurt tourism in our county a lot. Had several phone calls. People are waiting here.
I think next Monday, you should let the state open up.
Yes, I agree with you.
I will recommend that the, the public hearings be held scheduled for five o'clock or soon thereafter. Since it's not a joint hearing, it won't be a seven o'clock hearing, it'll be a five o'clock.
Have that motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, we're voting to have the public hearings on the twenty-seventh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. All righty. Okay, moving into new business, quarterly appropriations. I guess we're appropriating about twenty thousand. I'm going to do it by funds again. I guess someone has to make a motion to, to the county, General County, for six million, five hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion, you have a second. Don't be shy, fellas. We got to spend it. All right, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. School operating fund, thirteen, that million, seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay. Social service funds, one million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred thirty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Sheriff's fund, seven forty-six, six thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise. Any abstentions?
Okay.
All righty. Southwest Regional Jail. I'm going to read what it says here. As you may remember, the city of Bristol has been working with the Southwest Regional Jail Authority in an effort to join the authority as a full member for the third time. By adding the city of Bristol as a full member, it will result in the county's overall percentage of liability to lower from one-tenth to one-eleventh. The city is also committed to pay for a minimum of two hundred prisoners, whether they have that many or not. If they end up with more than that, they will pay for the total number of prisoners they have, but it will not go below two hundred for the first ten years. Attached is the, is three, three documents really attached. But basically, it comes down to we're voting to share this jail with the city of Bristol, which will lower our percentages, which means we will be paying less and costs us less to operate.
And I would say that the, the jail has the capacity. They don't have to worry about additional construction necessary for this and they've already been housing quite a few of the Bristol inmates up to, to date, so. The recommendation would be to approve the agreements and authorize the county administrator to execute any documents necessary to have that happen.
And just to update, Sean and I are on the regional jail authority board. And I assure you, this has been debated and talked about and debated and, uh, the city of Bristol is, they've got to do something. It's, and I guess I can say this. We want to make it where we benefit from it and everybody benefits, because if we wait and the state forces us to do it, we could get into some terms we might not like.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was the part that scared me, you know, because the city of Bristol has to, they do not have the money to build the jail that they need. They, I think the estimate came in, they needed eighty-five million to build their jail and they, they do not have the debt capacity to do that. Their only option is for us to bail them out for lack of a better way. And we're trying to be fair with it, but they, they stung us two other times already, so.
And I would say not only is it good, I think it's a good deal for Smith County, but I think it's a good deal for the city of Bristol and it's probably the right thing to do in my, at this point, just as a good neighbor.
And I think as a casino opens at two hundred, maybe a small number.
Who knows?
They're taking the heat from the landfill too.
They are, they are. Let's give them some positive.
We help them. We be a good neighbor and help them and help ourselves. All righty. I guess everybody read that, didn't you?
All thirty-eight pages?
I'll be honest, I, I did not make it through all of them. Where I'd sit through some of the meetings, I did not make it through all the pages, so.
I'll make a motion.
To approve the agreements and authorize county administrator to execute?
So moved.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? I will state that if one, if one of the ten current jurisdictions votes no, it's gone.
Yeah, we, it comes.
It's got to be unanimous, so, just because we vote yes and nine, and eight others do, if one says no, they don't get in, so. At that point, the state would step in and make us take them, so I, I'm happy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Sounds like your motion carries. I believe we took care of the, took care of this second part, third, the attachment nine.
Yes, sir.
Oh, attachment ten, Ms. Limey's appointments.
If you turn over to page one hundred and seventy-four in your packet. We have some, a few of the boards around the county that require annual appointments rather than three-year terms or four-year terms. So I have a memo similar to what we did last January. And I'd like to, I guess we need to make, or make motions for each individual, unless you want to approve the list as, as provided, however you wish. I will say that what the folks that are on here are, are committed or willing to continue serving. As far as, as far as, I'm the only one I haven't spoken with, Mr. Atkins, or you can continue serving for the Marion downtown.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I know when that one meets, so.
Right.
I, I like it both ways. I like to take name by name in case we don't, but I thought it was good to just vote it. There's nobody new coming in on this, I don't think, so.
That's right. Well, there actually is one, there will be one needed change. The Mount Rogers ASAP Board, Ms. Wyant did serve as the county board's representative out of two A. We do need to have a, someone to volunteer to serve on that.
Okay, well, let's do it this way. Let's start with one, a area beautification committee, those seven individuals. Do I have a motion? We approve all those.
So moved.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Okay, the community policy management team, CPMT team, do I have a motion to them?
I will say there is one change on this one. The only change I've added is, a few times this past year, Ms. Hayden has had to sit in my, in my place, but she wasn't formally a voting member, so I'd like to ask if she'd be able to serve as my alternate.
And I need to, and I'll, and I'll have to abstain on this. It's my was on that.
Well, just fire her. She might want office.
She's too good on that.
Yeah, we need her. We need her.
She's been there since I served on that committee, so. Okay, so we, we got the one new addition. Any other discussion? I hate to ask, have I had a motion yet?
Yes, me.
Okay, we have a second. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Are the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same, and any abstention?
Abstained.
All righty. Keeps Southwest Virginia Beautiful, Mr. Manuel Streets serves on that one. Do I have a motion to reappoint him?
So moved.
Now, a motion in the second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Manuel's also on the Southwest Virginia Regional Recycling and Solid Waste Working Group. Boy, I pity that one right now.
Yeah.
What's going on in? Any, do I hear a motion to reappoint Manuel?
So moved.
One second. We have two seconds for them. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. District Three Governmental Cooperative Board, uh, me and Chris is my alternative. Unfortunately, Chris, he's never had a chance to go, because I make it to most of the meetings.
Thank you.
Two point one mile. Do I have a motion to reappoint me and Chris?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And I'm gonna abstain. Marion Downtown Revitalization, I serve on this committee, and Kendra is my alternate.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And I abstain. Mount Rogers ASAP Board. Mrs. Wyatt has been on that board, and I don't think we've had a chance to discuss a replacement for her yet.
We could refer that to the Appointments Committee if you wish.
That's what I would recommend is, everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, Appointment Committee.
I think that in the form of a motion.
I think we just go ahead and do it. Mount Rogers Community Service Board, Joanne Gross Close has terms expired. She eligible, I believe she's willing to serve again.
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have a second? Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty, Mount Rogers PDC Board. Roscoe has represented the county on this board for years. We recommend he be reappointed to an additional four-year term to expire twelve, twelve thirty-one, twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
I abstain.
Okay. Pathway Regional Industrial, later on, we'll have the Town of Saltwood represented, and we have to sign off on them. Pathway Regional Industrial Facility Authority. We need to appoint counties three members of the Pathway, uh, RIFA Board, and the ordinance states that the board should appoint a member from the Board of Supervisors, a member from Economic Development Authority, and a chief administrator officer. Okay, so let's turn that over to the Appointment Committee also. Is that, is that okay with everybody? Because I have not heard anything as to who.
And that will give the EDA time to discuss their, their recommendation.
Okay, okay. We're down twelve D now, annual statement of economic interest. It's a half a year, so attached in the packet is, if you have not done it yet, there's one there. Uh, we need to get that in by the end of the month.
Yeah, um, it's, due date is four-year first, and I understand there's several penalties for those that don't make it.
Fifty dollars to make flat on that.
Check.
Organized per. Uh, report from the county administrator and staff. Okay.
So you have on your day, it's just a, a little memo, I just have four quick things to, to note. Um, good news on the Morrison Building here. This time last year, I was expecting to be able to have a survey plat done in four to six weeks. Twelve months later, we finally have that approved by the Attorney General's Office. Uh, Mr. Farthing will be reviewing the revised deeds and, and relative easements. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna say four to six weeks, but let's, let's hope that we close by the end of the, the fiscal year. Um, that way we can start work on the, the heating and air, um, project. Um, you'll, you may remember this, the, the building is provided, I guess two-thirds of the building is provided, um, steam from the state hospital. That contract is set to expire twenty-four months after the transfer of ownership. So that clock hasn't set, hasn't started yet, but we still are gonna be pushing time to be able to get whatever renovations in place within that twenty-four months for a building this size. Uh, so we are moving forward on that. Another item, this is just a brief thing, and, um, Mr. Sturgill might, uh, I don't know if he wants to comment or not, but I, I thought it would be good to make sure the, the board knows that we've been approached by some, a citizen that has some concerns regarding the school board and the STEAM curriculum, that's the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Um, it's a very popular program that's really a nationwide effort. Um, there's a citizen that's asked the, the county administrator, um, really county, to, to, um, review contracts that are under the school board's purview. After reviewing with, uh, Mr., Mr. Farthing, this is, uh, I responded to her to let her know that this is not something that the county has any type of oversight or, um, or control over, and that she needs to, um, uh, you know, provide some, some requests to the, through the school board superintendent and, and that way, that nature, but I did wanna make sure the, the board supervisors knew in case, um, you were approached. Third item, the Evergreen Soil and Water Conservation Board. They have a, have put out a request, they met, I guess, last week, and they'd like to have a joint meeting with each of their, each of the governing bodies in Smith County, they'd like to do that sometime in March, if that's, uh, suitable. I thought it might be a good idea if we, if we looked at the second meeting, um, of, of March. Uh, we'll try and keep the, the agenda, overall agenda light, so that we can, uh, focus on, on what their, their goals are, they just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page and share some ideas of what they're looking to do, what we might be able to partner with. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep you posted as, as we get closer on that. And finally, the Virginia Industrial Events for the Alliance, the VIA Group, that's the Regional Economic Development, um, Organization. They are hosting an orientation for, on economic development, case, basically an economic development one oh one for the region. Uh, it started, the conversation started out for, for new members like, um, uh, Mr. Widener, but I think it's, it, it'll be good for any board members that wish to attend, especially if you, if you're not in tune with the changes of economic development, or what, what, what really, um, economic development entails. I'd encourage as many folks as, as we can to, to get out there. I need to give them a head count by Friday, so if you could let me or Paula know. The, it's gonna be the twenty-seventh at noon.
And what, what day?
It'll be at, at Withfield Community College in Grayson Hall in the auditorium. They'll have lunch provided, so that'll be a good thing, you'll be able, they'll, they'll feed you if you, if you show up. Go ahead and plan for about ninety minutes to two hours. Um, they'll, they'll get you out as, as fairly quickly, but they'll have, they'll have folks from, uh, various state agencies there to, to talk about some of the programs and qualifications and, and how the county fits into the economic development realm as, as a whole. And that's all I have, unless folks have any questions.
Any questions for him? Hearing none, uh, we'll go to county attorney. I skipped right over him, he was, he was sitting there very quietly, letting me skip over him.
He thought he got.
He thought he got away with it.
I like to hide in the corner if I can. Uh, I don't have a lot to report on, other than I have a very long list of tasks to do for Smith County. Um, I have worked on Riverside, not Riverside, Quail Run, Riverside I've worked on, too. Um, I'm trying to get service on Riverside with a private investigator, I'm supposed to meet with him tomorrow, uh, and see what his fees are, and make sure he can do what I need him to do. Um, so, working on that. Um, Quail Run, working on ownership. Um, I've still gotta finalize my complaint and send it to Clegg, but, uh, ownership's an issue because the record owner has died. He, she left a husband, who I think is still living there, because he had a marriage license recorded in January of twenty-one, marrying someone else. And his address is Quail Run, his name is George Tuggle, uh, and I think that's who might be living there. There's a son of the lady who passed away. He's in Sugar Grove, I don't know where he lives. And then there's a daughter, maybe in Russell County, I'm not sure, but I think all three have an interest in land. I'm gonna serve them all and see if I can't stir up some problems, even once I find an address, uh, for the daughter and the son. Um, and, uh, so that's on my plate, it's, they're spinning, it's just, I gotta grab it. Um, I have been working on several ordinances recently, uh, trying to make them in the board's package, I didn't get that deadline, sorry about that. Uh, but we did get them done, you got a nice draft to be, uh, available for citizens when you advertise public hearing. Clegg's assistant Sarah sends me a nice list roughly every month of all the things I haven't done yet. Uh, so I'm, got that reminder every month, which is very nice. Uh, there is a Board of Zoning Appeals, um, appointment that needs to be done, I worked on that today, I have a draft, um, and I need to confirm some addresses. I think I can get that filed and done fairly quickly, hopefully I'll have an order this week if the judge is in on the zoning appeals, um, which we may need in a couple of weeks, depending on your decision on the airstrip. Um, but, um, that's where I'm at at this point, um, do you have any questions?
Does, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Zoning member that still needs to be processed, do we have a quorum if that's not taken care of with an issue?
There's two that need to be appointed, uh, so I guess that leaves five, is that right?
Yeah, so there's seven total members, there are two alternates, we're recommending, and we bumped them up to full-time, and that should be the order that gets, uh, but there are three alternates now that need to be filled, so I imagine the Appointment Committee will keep them busy for a while.
But right now, we have a quorum.
Right now, yeah, we were able to meet January for our organizational meeting, and we're good.
Thank you. Everybody been sworn in and everything this time, or?
Yes, yes, all that's worked out.
Thank you.
It's good.
And, and normally, I think that order would get entered in a week or two, so it would be, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. And then, once the order's entered, another two can probably run by the courthouse and get sworn in, I'm not sure what that process is, but.
Well, that's before, we just wanna make sure it doesn't.
Yeah, I understand, you wanna cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? I enjoy serving Smith County, it's fun. I just wish I had more time to, to work on your projects, but I like local government work, it's, it's, it's interesting, enjoyable.
Thank you, thank you. Patience with us. Hearing none, we'll start with supervisor time, I will not start with Mr. Widener, I'll let you, I'll, I'll start at the other end, so you can figure out. Chris, Mr. Agler, I'll start with you.
Don't have a whole lot to say, other than just I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our newest sitting member, Mr. Widener. Uh, look forward to seeing you get, get your wheels under your hair and hit the ground running with us here, so, uh, welcome. Um, and with that, I will pass on to the next one.
I also had that on my agenda, to welcome Mr. Widener to our, to our board, and look forward to working with you. Uh, I look forward to, to all of us working together as we see the challenges of our county and our many areas to try to come up with a, what's the best solution. And like I said, I, I, I hope that, you know, I don't know, the pandemic will ever end, you know, COVID may be here that we live with it. I heard one newscast say that we, might be something we deal with forever, it's just kind of here to stay, so. I don't know, we'll see, but anyway, I hope for a great year, I hope our campgrounds get open, so we can get some tourism back in, a little bit of normalcy back in people's lives, and I hope and pray that this is a great peaceful year for us economically and for living here in the county. Thank you.
I also would like to welcome you to board, and since you didn't say anything tonight, I can make this a comment. Don't be afraid to say something that sounds stupid, we've all done it. Because you, you're being thrown so much information, you're expected to know so much. Don't be afraid to ask questions, don't be afraid to, to give us your viewpoint, because that's what you're here for. Uh, and I can't stress that enough, you know, we'll tell you if you're wrong, but. I, I, I really encourage you to speak up, because it's, it, it means a lot to the rest of this board to hear what, how you feel about it. And so, uh, I welcome you on board. Uh, second, uh, we'll be getting together, Lori and I will, and working on committee assignments. If any of you have a committee you want to be on, or one that you don't wanna be on, please let me, or Sean, or Lori know, and we'll try to work, we want, we want you to be on committees you wanna be on. We want you to work on things that you want to work on. And finally, if you, and it's, you know, I, I don't know if it's the right place to do this or not, but if you have a water or sewer issue in your district that you want, you know, or you, you see a place that really needs to have water extended to it, that if we could get water there, we would, you know, somebody, we could get some economic development to take place, pass that information on to myself or to Sean, because if, I would, I would sort of like to know where we need to be putting our emphasis on water and sewer for the next year, or even for the next two or three years. If, you know, I, I mean, like in my district, I know of a couple of places I wanna see us do some things, and it, we all do. And so, uh, we, if we don't know about them, if you, if you know it but haven't told us, we need to know it. So, uh, look through your district and let us know what we can or can't do to, to help you.
And we need to make sure that, that gets into that water study, because that'll be a living, breathing document for, for years to come.
So, I mean, you know, if you don't say it now, somebody from somewhere else might not think to look at it, so. Now's our chance to say, hey, we need, we need a sewer line to run to, um, the top of the Glade Mountain, you know, for whatever reason, I don't know, but. But speak up. And having said that, everyone, I, I hope we have a good year, I'm like, uh, Mr. Sturgill, I hope we have a, a good cooperative year. We don't always agree, but we get things done. We gonna have some, with this COVID thing, we've had some issues, we still gonna have some issues, I'm sure, but, uh, let's work to make the county better. Um, we'll hope you get some reports here, you know, we had a tourism meeting last night. Uh, if we can get our campgrounds open, we get some other things with tourism, we can get some growth, we can get some, you know, a decent, two or three restaurants, two or three, uh, lodging facilities, this county can really begin to boom. You know, right now, we've been restricted a little bit, so. Let's work to make it a better county for everybody, and if we did, if we increase the tax base, we don't have to increase taxes, that's the beauty of it. Increase the base.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I too wanna welcome you aboard, it's very likely I will not always call you Mr. Widener, because I've known you for so long, so don't hold that against me, I'm excited that I can appreciate you stepping into this role. It, it's a thankless job sometimes, but just remember why you're here, being a part of the county. Um, just, I know Ms. Wyatt wasn't here for us to, uh, express our appreciation to her, but just wanted to, to do that publicly, and uh, I know she, she served as, as chairman on the first, my first year, my first, um, time being voted in as vice chair, and I appreciate her taking me under her wing and kinda guiding me there, and she, she saw a lot, and experienced a lot of, when COVID hit, and it was an interesting year, but I certainly appreciate her, her service to the county. I'm excited about Wood Green's expansion, um, and seeing life come back to a once-shuttered facility. I know especially the view from, from the interstate, it looks like there's not much going on there, but I'm excited to see movement there, and, um, appreciate Wood Green being a, a good employer for the citizens of this county and surrounding counties. Also, I just wanna mention that this past Sunday, January ninth, was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to recognize the men and women who served not only this county and the towns within, but also, um, across our, our state and, um, all throughout the U.S. Uh, they make sacrifices, their families make sacrifices, and a simple thank you is just not enough, but I did wanna recognize our folks in law enforcement. Uh, and also, I spoke to Ms. Ann Pennington from the Conorok Community Center on my way to our meeting this evening, and she just wanted me to pass along her appreciation to this board and to the county for supporting their center over there in Conorok, so I promised her I would do that, so on behalf of Ms. Pennington, thank you.
Do we have a water issue right now?
Not yet, but.
We're working.
We're working on it.
She did, um, she did not realize that we had funded, provided funding for her operations this current fiscal year, so a conversation last week, uh, she got a nice little thirty-five hundred dollar, um, uh, thank you, so I think that's, that probably sparked her desire to call this deal, but. Yeah, that, we're working, hoping that the Blue Ridge Discovery Center can, can provide some water, because they're building a community well for, for their operation.
Right, so, and, uh, but I just wanna echo, too, my, my prayers also, that we'll have a good year in the county, lots of things happening, pray the Lord gives us favor on things, and I just also wanna say, I know we had talked about switching chairman, doing some things, but most of you all know I'm expecting, so serving as chairman was gonna be a little bit overwhelming for me, so appreciate Charlie and his leadership, and, uh, excited to serve as vice chair under his leadership again this year.
Get ready.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank everybody for the kind words this evening. Um, I also wanna thank my constituents who's entrusted me being in this position. I wanna do the best possible job I can, I've got a great group here to work with, um, you know, I know we have a lot of tough jobs ahead of us, and I look forward to tackling those. Um, Mr. Chairman, I will speak up, you, you may get tired of hearing me at, at points, but, uh, um, but I just wanna, I, I do wanna, I, I wanna thank all of you, and, uh, I just wanna work as hard as I can to make Smith County just one of the safest and best places to visit and live, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, go right here.
I just want to say one more thing, and I'm glad Lori reminded me that, I want to personally thank Courtney, his crew, School Resource Officers. You will believe what a difference they make in our schools, and what all they do for our students and staff, and the way they make our staff feel in the buildings, so I want to personally thank the Smith County Sheriff's Department for what they do, and also what they do to School Resource Officers, and, uh, somebody will come follow them one day, they, they understand why they're needed, thank you.
Alrighty, I believe we're going to go into, so we have a little closed session business. Uh, Lori, are you ready to read us into it?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session under Code in Virginia, Section two point two dash three seven one one, A one Personnel Matters Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Discussion, Salaries, Discipline, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of any Public Body.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who was the second?
What's that?
Who's seconded?
Nobody? That was an assumption on my part.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Alrighty, is your recording turned off now?
Remind me to talk to you before you leave.
Thank you, everybody.